Alrighty, I'll call this meeting to order for the Village of Campton Hills. It's May 6, 2025, about 7:01 PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benetti?
Here.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee Mallett is absent. Trustee Muir? Oh, he's here.
Yeah, yay, there you go.
Trustee Muir?
Here.
Trustee Hafslberger?
Here.
And President Wonicki?
Present. Please rise for the pledge. And Frank, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. We'll move on to public comment. We'll start out, Tracy.
Tom Bayon?
Yeah. Oh, good. Chief, I'll turn the mic on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. My name is Thomas Bayon. I lived in Campton Hills for about 21 years. I love this community. The Village of Campton Hills is a wonderful place. It has a small-town feel and the greatest residents. Unfortunately, today, I have a complaint to voice that I need help resolving it. I'm the president, also the president of the Wasco Sanitary District. As the president, we service 1,200 households. That means like, there's like, three people in a household. It means about 3,600 people, about a third of the, of the village. Along with the businesses in the Commons and Square. Our administrative offices, the radium plant and the well 2, is diagonally across from the village building. Our property is one of the parcels of land that is next to Old Whitehead Brothers, White Brothers, Old White Brothers Trucking Garage, which leads me to the reason I am here. The current state and process has led this property looking the way it does is programmatic, really is programmatic. As many might know, the property was used before the village was incorporated as a trucking parking lot and supposedly grandfathered in as a trucking parking lot. The new owners did not have to rezone the area and the property and engage in public hearing at all and to share any of their plans. Here lies the root of my concern. First, there's a lack of transparency about the plans for this property. There has been limited amount of public information on the final use. Potentially, the zoning officer and the new owners have a plan, but I personally am struggling to find out what the details of the plan is.
Is that true? No.
Secondly, the property has been cleared of trees, which now exposes the entire property. While the village does not have an ordinance, as far as I know, but somebody told me that they did, about cutting trees down, the process now exposed how unsightly and litter-stroked the property is. As an example, there's mounds of cinder blocks and bricks that I assume to me, I assume that they're used to build up the property, the block, the lot. There are tires there. It's old stumps. Huge amount of trappings around the property. There's used culverts, small and large, almost six feet. There's a house that is partially torn down and frankly, a little scary-looking, as far as I'm concerned. This is across from the Wasco School, elementary school. And what an unsightly thing to see on your way to school, isn't it? Beyond the aesthetics of the new, now exposed property and trash, there is a potential functional issue. On the property, there is a storm drain, a storm drain, that appears to be partially covered and missing some culverts. I suspect that could be cause flooding for the surrounding properties and potentially wash unwanted cultural agricultural waste into our storm system, causing potentially other data. Lastly, there is even a bigger concern I share. While the property is not finished, the new owners are parking large trucks. In fact, I seen a truck park in the parking lot as others coming in. And they have a truck parking lot over there now. Trucks could be leaking gas and oil. And without proper zoning, the drainage plan that those containment could cause potential problems and find their way into the waters, the water of our district. That's well 2. It's between the radium plant and our offices. The well is about 600 feet down below the service, so perhaps maybe it's okay, but it's just one of the three wells we service our customers with. And who knows? The, the, gas and oil may stream down. Overall, the problem, property does not reflect an aesthetic we have all subscribed to in our community and doesn't represent the potential hazard to our water supply. Here's what I ask. There should be public knowledge on the plans for the property. There should be a time limit on when the property needs to be improved. The zoning officer and the township should take, investigate the environmental concerns I raised. There should be an immediate effort to improve the property. I've had many, many conversations, I had a couple of conversations with Mark, and he says that the property should be improved by May 1st. What time is it? Well, is May 1st gone, right? I've not seen any improvements. All I've seen is more dumping. I've seen a pile of ash, asphalt tile out there now. So, I ask your help in trying to improve the overall value of our, our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, moving on, we have the proclamation 25-05-06. It's from Motorcycle Safety Week, Abate of Illinois, and our motorcycle rider, Kim, is going to read the proclamation.
Okay, so May is Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Awareness, oh, a month, okay. Thank you.
So, okay, so the proclamation for Abate of Illinois, Inc., whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our village and state, and whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas motorcycles are a primary, common, and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our village and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of Abate of Illinois, Inc., a brotherhood aimed toward education, that's what Abate stands for, continuing, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs and to general, the general public in our village and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past nine years. Whereas, all motorcyclists should join Abate of Illinois, Inc. in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of our village and state, and whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organization, and whereas during the month of May, all road users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways with the Village of Campton Hills and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the president of the village board, in recognition of 38 years of Abate of Illinois, Inc. and over 352,318 registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of a continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Motorcycle Awareness Month and urge all motorists to join in the effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways. And it will be passed and approved this day. And signed by our village president, Barbara Wonicki.
Alright, thank you, Kim. So that copy's for you. If you'd like to come up and take that copy. Okay, I have just a short public comment as well. Campton Hills was ranked the number-one safest city in Illinois in the 2025 Safest Cities Report. And this isn't the first time, and I think we're all very proud of that and very proud of our police department too, our public safety department, so. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Anything to remove from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove item E, as in easy.
Okay, anything else? Kim, you were first.
Item B.
B? And Nick?
Item C.
C? Okay, motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of 4B, 4C, and 4E.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Janet, second by Frank. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Hafslberger?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Alright, we'll take it in order, 4B.
Okay, so that's the warrants for.
Talk loud enough, anyway. Anyway, so on that warrant list, and it's very minor, very, very minor. It's actually a typo. Um, let me get to it. So it's the Card Member Service for First American Bank. The first item on there, that should actually say Mail Chimp, not Marl. There's an R in there that shouldn't be there. That's all I have on it.
So it should be Mail Chimp?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second on that correction?
Second.
Second by Nick, was it? Okay, roll call on that.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Hafslberger?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll go to 4C. I don't know who pulled that, 4C.
I did. I didn't necessarily need to pull it, though.
Okay.
Because I had a comment, not a correction.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead, make the comment now. This item has our new police Ford Explorer, and I think that it was worth mentioning and making sure that, you know, the village knew that we already had the new Ford Explorer. We're approving to have it paid for. Came in a little under budget, which isn't that big of a deal. Not, that's not the reason for my comment. But it is a pretty amazing thing because this was a contentious item. When we were just going through budget, we looked at it. We were going and scrutinizing our budget, and we were able to get this on there. And we, as a village, have no property taxes, no user fees. We have $4 million of road work going in this year, and we have a brand-new police cruiser, which is exactly what our residents deserve. It's going to give the police department all the tools they need to keep us the safest city in Illinois, and hopefully also the tools they need to get all of the staff that they desire. So I just wanted to comment on the amazing, brand-new police vehicle that's on that. Thank you.
Alright, do I have a second? Second on that comment?
I'll second.
Frank? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Hafslberger?
Aye.
Alrighty. Okay, moving on, we'll move on to staff reports.
I know we got.
Do you want to, motion to table?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to return to the table.
For, 4E.
Orders 2509.
Okay, second on that?
I'll second.
A second by Kim? Okay, roll call.
Oh, okay.
Discussion.
Discussion? Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I had a conversation at lunch with Harrison's attorney, trying to work out a little bit more in the way that funds that the HOA could use or we could use in favor of HOA. So I talked with Administrator Rooney about that, finalizing that. So I think it'd be more appropriate to talk about this in, in two weeks when we should have a.
Positive resolution.
Positive resolution of it, yeah.
With both the developer, which is Hank Harrison, and the builder, the lattice version of the builder is Shodin. And they both stepped up, and we just need to formalize that in a document, and it'll be before you for approval. I mean, it's kind of outside our curb-to-curb acceptance of public improvements, but in the light of trying to help the new residents that have purchased homes at Norton Lake, we stepped in to try to mediate a better settlement of some of their issues on the development. And the lawyer for Ansel Glink works for Mike, and I, we kind of know him, and he's also the lawyer of record for the builder, the developer. So we think we should have something, good news, next meeting.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hafslberger?
Aye.
Okay.
That was to remove from the table for discussion, but you're, to take it off the table, but you moved it back onto the table.
For a date certain?
For a date certain, it needs to go to the 20th of May for consideration.
I just, yeah, I just want to make sure because the language of the motion on the agenda says for approval as well. So the motion is to take it back off the table.
Okay, wait, do I have to?
You took it off the table? I'm sorry, you put it back on the table? To discuss it, so you need to take it off the table again.
To move it to date certain.
So there was no need for a vote for that, other than just a consensus for that first motion, but there should be one for the second.
Okay.
So we'll need a first.
Move to table, date certain, May 20th.
May 20th?
Second?
Second.
Second by Janet? Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett? Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Hafslberger?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, moving on, five staff reports, police report, and Chief Lavand.
I'll push my police report back to the 20th so you guys can discuss other things, but a couple of quick comments. Thanks, Village President, for taking my thunder on this one because I was going to touch on the safest cities, but that's okay. So you got me back on this one.
I got you back on that one time.
So National Police Week is May 11 through May 17, so that'll be next week. Last week, I attended with a couple other officers, the police memorial service down in Springfield. It was a good service, honored fallen officers. One of them was DeKalb County Sheriff Christina Mussel, who passed away, and then K-9 Dax out of Waukegan, who was Lake County Sheriff, probably one of the greatest K-9s, amazing career. So it was an honor to do that. I want to recognize all the officers for their hard work every day protecting the residents, businesses, and visitors. So we'll have a recognition luncheon for them next week. You had already mentioned that we were named number-one safest city again in Illinois by Safe Wise, recognized for many reasons, and not just the low crime rate, but the community engagement and our location. Campton Hills was also named number-four in Illinois for the best city for senior living by World Atlas recently. So it's another kudos to the community. And then finally, I'd like to thank all the volunteers who assisted last week with the Great Western Trail cleanup. There was over 50 volunteers. We covered 3.5 miles. We even removed the trash ourselves, and the village president happily took part in it also. So just a big thank you to all the volunteers. That's it.
We have one of our guests here, Russell. He also had helped on Saturday, he and his wife. So thank you for that. And Mike Terrell. Mike Terrell was there helping as well. So thank you for that, Mike. Alright, moving on to the treasure report, fiscal year 2025 audit review, Lauterbach and Amon.
Good evening, everybody. I do not have any financial reports for you for the end of fiscal year '25. We're only a month into the new fiscal year. I'm not quite done closing out the books. The only comment I will state is that I think our deficit is going to be a little lower than we forecasted when we did the budget. I have distributed to all of you last month the hard copies of the audit report, and for the newer trustees, I distributed that electronically. But we have here today the partner from Lauterbach and Amon, Monica Adamsky, and the manager, Paul Rosario, that completed the audit. They'll present the findings and answer any questions you have.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Good seeing you again. I presented last year. So my name is Monica Adamsky, Principal at Lauterbach and Amon. I will walk you through three pieces of required communication that we have published in relation to the April 30th, 2024 audit. I just wanted to start off by thanking you all for having me here today to present this to you. And also thank you to Tim for all of his hard work. An audit does require a great deal of additional time and effort. We do have a lot of requests and questions, so we did get all of those in a timely manner, and it was a pleasure to work with him. The first item I'll talk about is a SAS 114 letter. You might not have that in front of you. It's just part of the audit package. The primary purpose of this letter is to convey whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties working with management. So I'm happy to report that in the body of that letter, you will find that we did not have any disagreements or difficulties working with management. And now to the actual audit report itself, which I think I see most of you have in front of you. On page four is the independent auditor's report. That's the one with the Lauterbach and Amon letterhead. This letter states that management is responsible for the financial statements, and then it's our responsibility as the auditors to generate an opinion on the financial statements. So happy to report that the village did receive an unmodified opinion. This is the cleanest form of opinion and highest level of assurance that we can issue. That means that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and there's sound internal controls over financial reporting. On page eight through five of the audit report itself is the management discussion analysis. This is a great narrative summary of the fiscal year's financial highlights. We understand that financial statements can be quite difficult to read and comprehend, so this section does have charts and graphs. And again, there's a section that indicates true financial highlights within the fiscal year. So if there's anything you're going to read while sitting out on your patio in this gorgeous weather, please read the management discussion analysis. On page 26 and seven are your fund-level financial statements for the governmental funds. This is ultimately what the village budgets for on an annual basis. So about halfway down the page, you'll see a line that says excess or deficiency of revenues over or under expenditures. Ultimately, this is your operating income for each of the respective funds for the fiscal year. So you'll see the general fund had an operating income of about $445,000. That's before $650,000 of transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, healthy ending fund balance of about $4.2 million. And again, if you go to the right on all these pages, you'll see the same information. Capital Projects had an ending fund balance of about $2 million. Any questions on those numbers?
Any questions? No?
Alright. After this is just the notes to the financial statements. Again, very detailed, lots of words about everything describing what happened. And in the back, you'll see budget to actual numbers, which is something that I know people like to look at just as a comparison, so. Lastly, is the management letter. Ultimately, this is just items that we have seen come up during the audit that we'd recommend. A lot of it is upcoming Gatsby pronouncements, so we'll work with Tim to get those implemented when necessary.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Janet.
My understanding is that an audit that is fully consistent with the state requirements has been completed, and we're grateful for that. Thank you. For those of us who are from the private sector and are familiar with a different type of audit, what are the things that we might want to look at? What are things that we might want to test that are not examined in an audit like this? I would note that about a year ago, a former member of our finance committee made a public comment and gave us a fairly long laundry list of things that are not covered in the state-mandated audit that virtually any organization that was responsible for both its P&amp;L and balance sheet would want to cover. Can you comment on that?
I only know what, you know, what is for an audit. I don't necessarily know in terms of what other things you would want to test or what's required. I definitely recommend, like, internal controls, I think, is very important, making sure there's multiple level of reviews, multiple level of sign-offs on everything that kind of happens within the village, looking at financial statements monthly. But in terms of testing, I, I can't speak to that in ter, you know, if you get monthly or quarterly reports, if something sticks out, an amount sticks out, if you have your budget to actually, and you see something is skewed a little bit, I would look more into that or request additional support. But in terms of internal testing, I'm not, besides an audit, and, you know, requesting support for those types of items, I don't know what to recommend.
May I respond?
Sure.
So I'm, I'm not criticizing the audit at all. Please don't understand, or misunderstand, but there are fundamental things that are not tested in this audit, right? So, you know, we don't necessarily know for sure whether our balance sheet accounts are right in, in a variety of instances because that's not something that you're charged with testing, correct?
Well, we test every single balance sheet account, actually. So that is one thing that we do focus on when it comes to prepaid, cash, obviously, we require statements, anything that's material on a balance sheet item, we do test.
What's the current, well, I, I don't mean to sandbag you because I know you probably don't know the answer to this question, but how are our roads treated on our balance sheet? Do you know anything about that?
They should be on your capital asset schedule. So they would be in your capital asset detail, on your capital asset, in your capital footnote, in the summary, that's where they would be.
What's the depreciation schedule for our roads? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can send you guys the capital asset, or Tim has it, the capital asset detail that we have, but I don't know necessarily off the top of my head.
Right. The reason for the questions is because it appeared to me in looking at this information in the past that we were depreciating our roads over an unreasonably long period of time. And so if we took the, the overall road assets into the village in 2007 at a given value, whatever that value was, and if we depreciated it over a 50-year schedule, which is what was being done at the time, we would be wildly out of conformance with the value of the roads versus how we stated it because we know that the useful life of a road is maybe 15 years and not 50, five-zero years.
Yeah, the only thing in terms of that kind, I would say it would have to be in line with the policy. So whatever the capital asset policy is, I would check with that, and maybe that just needs to be updated. But in terms of roads as well, if there's resurfacing that's done, and then maybe the added value to the life of the asset, then it would have changed that to be longer.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're all set too, Tim? Nothing else from Tim? Okay. Alright. Okay, moving on to action items. We'll go to 6A, motion to accept the fiscal year 2025. We'll go to six A, motion to accept the fiscal year 2025 annual financial report.
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Burson, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Mallett. Any discussion, comments? Nothing? Hearing nothing? Okay. Row call?
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Hafstenberger?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll go to six B. Motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twelve, amending village code of the village of Campton Hills relative to membership on the planning and zoning commission.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Burson, second by.
Second.
I'm sorry, Nick? Was that Nick? Okay. Second by trustee Botner. Discussion, questions? Go ahead, Janet.
I'm deeply concerned by this ordinance. I. It appears that there was not an understanding when the appointment of Drew Fraz was contemplated that this is not consonant with village code. And it does not seem to me at all appropriate to say, we want to do a thing, but wait a minute, that breaks the rules. So then let's change the rules. That's exactly what has happened here. And that is not the way that we should be doing business. If there was an idea that we should be appointing people outside of the village boundaries to the planning and zoning commission, then that notion should have been somehow brought to the board, and a consensus should have been arrived at. And that consensus then would have been a basis for engaging in the creation of an ordinance. So we're now looking at an ordinance that no one on the board asked for, that is here for the purpose of engaging in an appointment, that didn't really contemplate the fact that the person wasn't a resident and couldn't be appointed in the first place. And so I have no problem with Mr. Fraz. Everyone I've talked to loves him. So I think that's, that part would be great. It's just that he's not a resident. And so putting item B here for the purposes of fixing the mistake that was made in the appointment doesn't make sense to me, and I can't support that.
Mark or Carmen?
Yes, the request was made to me to prepare the ordinance. And I can just say that the, just for background on the verbiage within it, because the village has a combined planning and zoning commission, the procedures for appointment of the planning portion of that commission matches what is in the plan commission requirements of the municipal code, which allows individuals within a village's planning area, which is one and a half miles outside of the corporate limits, to be a member of that village's plan commission. So that's why this language is in here. As far as the zoning portion, or what's commonly referred to as the zoning board of appeals, the Illinois municipal code doesn't have any requirement as far as residency. So this particular verbiage can apply to the combined PZC in the village. It just has to, the requirement just has to be that that person doesn't live within another municipality. And the definition of municipality in the Illinois municipal code excludes townships or counties. So it's local villages, cities or villages, or towns as they're titled.
Okay. Administrator Rooney?
Just, we did measure the distance. He's about a half mile from the township line of the open space that's south of thirty-eight. And the actual corporate limit of not the township property that's south of thirty-eight, that open space parcel, he's right at a mile. So he's well within the state statute of the mile and a half. And it is in the planning area that we've had a lot of discussion on. So.
Yeah.
The idea was to try to show that group, if we're going to do nine hundred and sixty-two planned unit development with four hundred and sixty-two acres of open space, that person that's been part of the LaFox Association for the last twenty-five years has a good history of that area. And it's kind of like a goodwill gesture to that area that we're going to try to recognize someone from there as their contemplation of a future annexation and a planned unit development. That was the sole purpose. But the village code can be more restrictive than the state code, and that's what you're modifying in this, if you approve this. But if you don't approve this, we can't make the appointment that follows for Mr. Fraz.
Yeah. I'd just like to add too that Drew Fraz, he lives on Brundage Road. And most of the housing that is on Brundage Road, it's a lot, it's a lot of open, larger lots on Brundage Road. But he had, you know, neighbors had come to him, and many of them want to annex into the village. So this is really why this is on the agenda. Because Drew would like to annex into our village along with several, several houses on Brundage Road, which is just east of the farm, the Pulte Farm that was proposed to annex into St. Charles. And so, but Nick, you go ahead.
I like and support the idea of having Mr. Fraz on our committee. I don't support the permanent change in allowing non-residents to be on any of our committees. I do think that those should be restricted to people within the village boundaries. I wish there was another way to get Mr. Fraz more involved. But I don't see the long-term value outside of this one micro situation in increasing the boundaries a mile and a half outside of the village. I mean, it's not even a very large village. When we actually, if you were to draw a line around it, that's a huge area, increasing the boundary a mile and a half. That's a lot of, that's a lot of territory that now could potentially have a say-so in our planning and zoning. You know, it's a mile and a half all the way around. It's not just a mile and a half sticking out into LaFox. And this is permanent.
Okay. Anybody else? Mike? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a standing gripe of mine that I've had before. I don't like stuff being dumped on me at the last minute. I mean, we, if we had this concept, we could have workshopped it last week or two weeks ago, made sure we got all the bugs cleared up, and then we could, we could talk, take a vote on it tonight. The concept's fine. I like the concept. The questions that I would have, that I could have gotten ahead of time if we talked about it, is are we talking about replacing a current plan member? Are we talking about filling a vacancy? Are we talking about increasing from six to seven? Those are all options we could, we could, you know, go through if we wanted to look at a, in anticipation of, to trustee Botner's point, that land annex is in. It's a moot point. In the meantime, you know, I would have, let me rephrase. As part of the discussion, would an ex officio position be reasonable for a resident of the mile and a half ring? Use that term generically. It's not obviously a circle. Would that be a good position to show, hey, we're looking, we see, we hear, we want to hear from you, because we don't want to be the only ones, you know, in a vacuum, looking at that mile and a half? We don't know all the players. We don't know all the neighbors. So that makes a lot of sense. What we're talking about makes a lot of sense. I just don't know, as I said before, having all of a day to think about this, if this is the right mechanism to make this happen. So I would, depending on the feeling of my fellow board members, ask if we could have a little more discussion and a little bit more, a little more of a talk of the semantics to make sure this, answer those couple of questions, and then give us time to ruminate on this and get with our constituents to see if there's anything else we may not have thought of.
This vacancy occurred with trustee Hafstenberger's election and not being able to hold both the trustee position and the planning and zoning. That's the vacancy. Yep.
Okay. I think Frank was next, and then we'll get to Janet. Yeah?
So Teresa, it's all your fault. So I would agree. I mean, I think Mr. Fraz is an ideal candidate to have on. But it almost seems like we're creating this for, to accommodate him. And it opens us up to maybe longer-term risk of having people outside the village at some point down the road being able to jump on. So I agree with trustee Mallett. And I would also ask, is there a way to have a temporary position for a situation like this to accommodate where he is? You know, they may get annexed in. There's a project coming in. Is there a way to do it on a temporary basis where eventually he's going to be part of the village anyway, right? And that would limit our exposure to people long-term. So just a general question.
To get to that accommodation of a shorter appointment period, you have to first change the code to even address what you're saying in a shorter time.
Yeah. But I guess my question is, is there any way to put language in the ordinance to that effect? So you, and maybe even the board could say, hey, based on the circumstances, you know, we'll approve six months, nine months, twelve months, whatever.
I do believe that this is a unique enough situation because of the PUD that's going to be contemplated in a couple of weeks. And it is this unique planning area that has been discussed and much, much discussed and will be a major thing. The board still has to get four votes to put anybody on the commission, whether they be in the planning area a mile and a half or the village limits itself. So you do have a theoretical danger, but you also have to trust the seven people up here will have to get four votes for any unique situation. So yes, you're changing it and opening it up technically and factually. But you've got to trust yourselves of, would you go beyond this unique situation or not? You know, and trust the future boards. It's up to you, though.
Yeah. And I think that'd be a text amendment to totally change the ordinance. Am I right about that?
No. The village code can be amended just by ordinance.
Just by ordinance?
There was, there was a question that trustee Mallett had that I just wanted to answer quickly about ex officio member or non-voting member. That's certainly a possibility. There are some communities that allow for that. Either you fully staff the commission with seven voting members and then allow for a set number of non-voting members. Sometimes they have been, I've seen it before where they've been members for a long time, and they move out of town, but they would still like to have their experience on it. Yeah, builders, realtors, things like that. I would caution against having only six voting members and then one non-voting member, because then you could have quorum issues, not quorum issues, but you could have voting issues. And then you have tie issues if you have six members and you have three and three. So if you're going to do that, I would have non-residents be an additional member to solve that issue.
Go ahead, Janet.
I don't think anyone was suggesting that an ex officio position for Mr. Fraz would replace the appointment that is necessary on the planning and zoning commission. So planning and zoning commission needs to have seven voting members. That's what the code says. And so if for some reason we were to choose not to pass six B, we would not be able to pass six C. And we would be able to consider another appointment to the planning and zoning commission. That, none of that has anything to do with an ex officio member. And I would suggest that for the time being, the easiest way to thread this needle is to appoint Mr. Fraz as a, for want of a better term, a community representative who has the right to debate, but not the right to vote. And that is different from a liaison, because a liaison does not participate in debate, right? And so I think this would not only be a good idea for this particular situation that we're dealing with, but for future similar situations. If we're trying to welcome someone into the fold who is not yet a resident, and yet we want to, you know, get you involved in the process. We want to hear what you have to say. We want you to be a part of the debate. But because you're not a resident yet, you don't necessarily have a vote. To me, that would be a good way to solve this particular problem of this appointment. Nonetheless, we would still need to appoint a seventh member to the PZC.
I think, Nick, were you next? And then Mike will get over to you.
It'll be shorter now. I would definitely second the scenario that Janet, trustee Burson just painted. I think that that sounds like a very reasonable solution.
Okay. And then Mike, go ahead.
Could we get a little more, again, my harp about this being dropped on the table? Could we get a little more information from a town or two that KTJ or someone are familiar with where they have? And my recollection of back Lombard, or it might have been Downers, where there was a business person that was on for that reason. It was the business's representative to the plan commission, but they didn't live in town. So they weren't, you know, they were, exactly as trustee Burson said, they were there to debate, to give information, to be part of the deliberative process up to and short of being a voting member. So could we have some kind of information like that, that says which towns are doing this and how they're doing it?
Sure. We can, we can look into that information. I've definitely experienced personally, I used to be on a zoning board that had a non-voting member. That was one of, one of the members of the commission. And he was an initial, additional commission, additional member of the commission. Right now, and it would require an amendment to the village code, because right now you only have liaisons via trustees. I would probably recommend that it would, it would be a formal, like a non-voting member of the commission, an additional member. A community representative, while it might work for some committees or commissions in the zoning perspective, where you have formal petitions and objectors and due process requirements, as someone who's not a voting member, but is allowed to participate in the discussion and arguably influencing the decision of the commission could be seen as a due process violation. So I'd probably formalize it as an official member, just non-voting member.
Let's see. Kim, and then we'll get to Teresa, and then we'll go for a vote.
Okay. I definitely agree with trustee Mallett about that being dropped with no discussion, and trustee Burson too, that we should have had a chance to actually discuss it, because then maybe we would be here now voting on this and getting it done. I also like the idea of a non-voting member, but is allowed to participate in that. And getting that terminology right, so it doesn't appear like we're doing something wrong. And I have to agree with trustee Botner too, that I'm of the opinion that anybody on our commissions and our committee should actually be a resident of the village.
Okay. Thank you, Kim, and then Teresa, and then we'll go for a vote.
Just real briefly, when I first looked at this, I had kind of the same reaction. I'm not comfortable with, I guess, a non-citizen being on one of our commissions.
Resident.
Or sorry, non-resident. And so that concerns me. I, again, don't have anything wrong with Mr. Fraz. I've heard great things. I think he would be a tremendous, you know, asset to giving us advice on moving forward with possibly the annexation and other things. But I think there are probably other ways to do that. I think he can come and do public comment. He can come and speak to us every night. He can come in and, you know, have a discussion with us. I'm not opposed to doing some other sort of arrangement. But I think that the thing that I'm concerned about is that that opening it up to other situations down the road that don't seem quite as, as maybe nice as this situation, where we've got someone who we all generally like this guy. We think he's done a lot of incredible work. who we all generally like this guy, we think he's done a lot of incredible work, but then we kind of open up the process to a situation down the road that isn't quite as, as well-received and well-respected. So, that's my comment.
Okay, we'll move on, roll call then.
Move to table.
Move to table, okay.
Second.
That's who proceeds, right?
Second by Burson, and roll call.
Trustee Millet?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Hafstenberger?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we'll go on to 6C. Motion to advise and consent to the village president's appointment of Drew Fraz to the...
We can't.
We can't, okay. Okay, we'll pull it. It's done, it's pulled. Okay, D6D, motion to approve ordinance 25-13, an ordinance establishing video gaming regulations in the village code of Campton Hills, Kane County, Illinois.
So moved.
Moved by Burson?
Second.
Second by Frank Benetti. Discussion and questions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Millet?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Hafstenberger?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, good. Moving on to discussion items, number seven, 7A, consideration of user fees. And administrator Rooney, is that?
Yes, we, we discussed this a year ago and we've touched on it in the budget. We basically have a standing 150 to 250 structural deficit over revenues projected currently. So, and we have a capital budget of the roads that were spoken of that's depend on which standard of repair we would use. We're at a 15 to 25 million dollar deficit that has grown since 2007. Because at 450 or 480 revenue from MFT, you cannot do 102 miles of road and keep up. It's not anybody's fault from 2007 to the present, it's just you have to recognize the reports that the robotics and that Mr. Markort from HR Green has given us showing that. A way to address that, we discussed and it's in your packet, that with user fees and some of the MFT dollars, you could do a revenue bond, you know, at $10 million to address that and you wouldn't be going after the property tax. So, if you pass the, the user fees, one, two, or three, or four of them, you would probably want to make a pledge that it was going to capital needs, which be squad cars or servers or softwares to run the server, but primarily the roads. And I think that's the only way we're ever realistically, factually going to address the deficit in the capital needs of the road program with the village. And you see the estimates and we can talk any individual, one of the user fees and do them one at a time if there's like a desire of the board to consider those, to move them to a future agenda for passage. Because I don't want to give a long duration on each of those user fees if there's not a consensus to move it.
All right, do we have a consensus to move it?
To, to any one of the four listed.
Yeah. Go, go ahead, Janet.
The whole situation is problematic for me. Firstly, can we please drop the euphemism of user fees? These are taxes. Each and every one of these is a tax, they are not user fees. We are talking about a telecom tax, we're talking about a food and beverage tax, we're talking about an amusement tax. Those are the three items. So, I'm happy to talk about whether we want to move forward these three taxes, but they are not user fees in by any stretch of the imagination, and I resent that characterization as much as I resented it last year when it was brought up. I think other trustees have their own opinions about each of these individually, but I'm objecting to the notion of bringing this basket to us. I don't understand the urgency, I don't understand why with trustees that have barely just gotten through a grueling budget process, that, that, you know, we have new trustees that are being asked to consider this issue. Why does this, why is this even on the agenda now? Why isn't this on the agenda a month from now or something? What's the rush? You know, this supposed structural deficit, is it or isn't it? Because, you know, it kind of swings back and forth from year to year and it kind of depends on how we handle our road expenses. So, we have, for example, right now, $600, $600,000 restricted out of our reserves. We also, at the same time, double counted that expenditure by imagining that all of our MFT is going to go towards the, our match on the roads that we're working on this year. But we have no reason to think that we're going to write even one check for $1 for match on those roads in fiscal 2026. Because all the information that we have available to us today suggests that those roads are going to be finished pretty late in the season and that by the time the roads are done and the accounting's done and the state comes to us with a bill, our first payment might not even be until the beginning of fiscal 2027. So, we have restricted $600,000 in our reserves as we are required to do, that's appropriate, but we have also presumed that we're going to spend $600,000 of MFT, which we are certainly not going to do. And so, the, I dispute the contention that there is a budget shortfall outside of the road issue, which swings back and forth from year to year depending on how we do it. That much said, I have been a proponent from the beginning of if you're gonna, if you're gonna pass one of these various taxes, I've been a proponent of the telecom tax, it was always within the village charter, it was amiss on the part of the, of the first administration, the second and the third, and now this one, to not pass it. So, I am in, in favor of the telecom tax. I don't see any, any support for the food and beverage tax and I think the streaming tax is completely fraught.
And what about the utility on gas and electric? Almost every community in the state and the country has that, we just didn't do it when it was incorporated.
I did not see that included in the memo from KTJ.
Okay, anybody else have comments? Frank?
Carmen, do you want to touch on the, the utility tax?
It just, it was not included in the prior discussion last year, but as we indicated, it, it was not instituted by the village at the time of incorporation. The village did have the authority to, I mean, most communities did it back in the seventies when it was allowed, so that, that is also another possibility.
Yeah, I would just like to add that we did talk about user fees last year and there are probably very, very few municipalities that do not have user fees. It's, it's very, very rare. And I did send out to you something that Tracy has sent to me. Tracy works part-time in East Dundee and they definitely, they have a larger population than we have and geographically they're smaller than we are. They have user fees and these fees do help, you know, even, we have one full-time staff in our office, just one full-time staff, everybody else is part-time.
That's not police.
Hmm?
That's not police.
That's not police. Well, this isn't an argument, I'm just stating. Yeah, we, we have a, one of the best police departments in Alakane County and that's why we're the number one safest city in the state of Illinois. But, you know, it, it's, there's squad cars we have to buy, there's the salaries we have to pay for our police department. You know, I just arguing over something that, and it is a user fee because if you don't use it, you don't pay it. And I will go back and say that anybody who had Comcast, they were paying a user, a user fee. And to this, now Comcast, the majority of people no longer have Comcast. We used to bring in a lot of funds as a user fee for Comcast, but that has drastically, drastically dropped. And I don't see anything, I've talked to other residents in the community, they call me and they say, we need to bring some more money to this village because we do not levy a property tax in this village. And that's it. Anybody else have any comments? Mike or Frank?
Yeah, so, I, I think anything should be on the table, but the money that we raise should be earmarked for roads. Because the biggest complaint I heard while running for this position and while I've been in the position is, when are we going to fix the roads? And to trustee Millet's comment, even before I was a trustee, every community has road issues, right? Everybody has challenges. And I think we need a plan, you know, over the next 20 years or whatever, because there is going to be a shortfall. So, I would be willing to have the discussion, you know, about generating additional revenue, assuming that it can be earmarked to improve roads and, and that's at least part of what I've heard. But I, I'm going to add this, I think we need to go to the residents and ask. Look, we have a road issue, we have a shortage of funds issue. Would you be willing to pay user tax fee to improve your roads? If we put together a plan for you that over the next five years, 10 years, whatever it is, this is what it's going to cost you, this is what you're going to get in return, would you consider it? And I think let the residents make the call or at least offer an opinion. Because that's one thing governments don't always do, is actually talk to their residents and the people that they're supposed to represent. So, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, Nick, go ahead.
Thank you. Really similar comment to trustee Benetti. I would, in fact, I created something, I wanted to pass it out if I can. Do you mind if I pass out some language?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Nick.
Sure, cool, thanks, there you go. If you don't mind just passing all of those down. But for myself personally, I would also need 100% of the resulting revenue from these earmarked in the ordinance that it was going to be allocated, 100% for roadwork.
We could do that, yeah.
And I think that with that change being made, I mean, it would be something that would be worth considering. Not all of these, perhaps none of them, but the fact is, the franchise fees are steadily declining. You know, the Comcast franchise fees, every year, they're down, down, down. The telecommunications tax, it seems like a reasonable thing to compensate for that lost revenue that the village has lost. But the way it's written right now, it's just money in the general fund and it can be used for anything. I mean, it's just a matter of what we're discussing, that it's going to be used for, you know, servers and this and roadwork. I would personally, in order to support this, need to see it 100% going towards roadwork.
The majority of complaints we get at the village of Campton Hills from our residents are, are the roads, there, there's no doubt about it. When can you fix the roads? And, you know, we are working on our cost share program with HR Green, which is actually a wonderful opportunity, so at least we'll get some through roads done. Some of them, I think, at the end of this year, but then that is some of them at the beginning of next year is from what I hear. So, I need somebody else, Mike, you, you, yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'm a no on places of eating, just, I said that, it was in the minutes last meeting, so, just, I'll be, that's, that's a no. To the, to trustee Benetti's comment about going to the folks, at some point, I think you're right, you are absolutely right. I'm still reviewing part of this as replacement revenue, so I'm looking at whether it's telecom, if we look at it that way, or the streaming more specifically, as replacement revenue. We, we had it when we started, it's, it, it, the, the, the money that we were taxing, because it's listed as a, the ordinance calls them taxes, but they're also called franchise fees, so. The, the, as alluded to, people paying their Comcast bill, that money Comcast gave to us, less people are paying Comcast bills, it's going away.
That's right.
Though people are now spending that same money on streaming services. So, I think that's a replacement, so I'm not as concerned, I'll take the political hit if, if, you know, people are going to vote me out because, you know, I instituted, I instituted a streaming tax. I'm, I'm, that's, I'm defensible on that, I think. The ones we didn't incorporate originally, maybe that's something we do look at having, because the, the, the other side of the coin is, we try to be as comparable to unincorporated residents as opposed to other municipal residents, so if you weren't paying that as an unincorporated resident, you, we need to have that discussion. Because Comcast, the county was collecting Comcast and, and possibly some folks here remember, we had to have a lawsuit because Comcast kept sending that revenue to the county for three years after we incorporated, four years after we incorporated. So, and we looked at how much it was going to cost us to fight it and it was, you know, at that point, it was $380,000, $400,000, and so we went in on $70,000, $80,000 to get that. So, that was a, you know, that was a good investment. We spent 80, we got, and we netted up $320,000, whatever the case may be. So, since these weren't there, that might be something, we try to figure out a way to, to get some public input on that. And to trustee Botner's handout, yes, absolutely. We, we would not be doing this, I'll, I'll bring up one more thing from last meeting, but we would not be as concerned about this except for the, the common occurrence of, of us being behind on our, our road investments. But, we did talk at budget time of, we want to support the police to the level that chief has recommended and we're seeing that, that, that is diverging from what we originally were, were talking about too. So, there'll be le, less available to do capital transfers from in the future. So, that's to where it, it, you can call it a structural deficit depending on how you do the transfers, right? So, if more of it's going, if more of the straight operating goes to public safety, we want to do that, then, then that's an opener, I think, to looking back at public input, say, okay, folks, policing was 50% of our budget, it's now 55% of our budget, it might be 60% of our budget, that means we're not going to do the other things. If everybody's cool with that, fine, that's where we're going to be, we're great police, crappy roads. That's what we are, fine. There's other avenues, there are other avenues to, to deal with roads too. We've talked about in the, in the past, if subdivisions wanted to put themselves under a special service area, we can implement that, we did that for, to fix drainage concerns as many folks know. Or we can just look at going to a bond, we can, we can put on a ballot if we want to go for bond for general road improvements, that's another option too, that would not have fared well, I don't think, the last election, although Open Space passed. So, to the, to the point of asking for guidance going forward, places of eating, absolutely no. To trustee Burson's point about the telecom tax or the amusement tax, there's things in there I think we could strike out in, in the proposed ordinance, like bowling and a couple of other things like that to, to focus on it. And then there was provisions about if you don't regularly, so I was thinking about, would this affect, say, the, the alehouse having live entertainment charge and cover? It wouldn't because the way it's read, if, if that's not recurring or how it's phrased, it's less than so many times a year, you, it doesn't, it doesn't apply. So, we need to, if that comes, we need to make that clear, yes, we're really trying to just capture streaming dollars, even though the broad language the state gives us does talk about things like it mentioned, horse riding, so if somebody has a, and also would exclude 501(c)(3)'s, other government agencies, so I mean, it's, it's not going after not-for-profits either. But I think it would be worth our time to, to see how much of that we can tailor to our, what we're trying to do, which is really just try to, try to get back that, what we lost in our Comcast money.
What about?
Oh, utility, that's Oh, utility, that's the thing, maybe we need to see if we get some sort of buyback or some sort of feedback from the, the residents, because that wasn't there at the beginning.
I think Tracy's next.
So, you know, I apologize because I'm a newbie here. So I don't have all the background. I do remember being at the meetings about six months ago when this first came up. But do we have projections on what we can potentially bring in with these different? It was in this handout?
Well, each of them.
Not in this hand, in this handout?
Each, each of them are around $200,000 roughly plus, probably on the plus side higher. Depend, because the telecom, you can do 3% up to 6%. If you did the 6, it'd be closer to 250.
And then do we have estimates on?
In the streaming, we've got a rough projection of that because we just said we'd equal what East Dundee does. There are 3,000 residents and they're not as median income high as this community. So the 225 is very conservative. And the utility tax, again, comparing to other sized communities, that would be probably 225 to 300,000. So you do have a handle on the number. And the food and beverage would be in the 225 to 250 annual revenue.
And do we have, do we have an idea of, of the increase in, in average families' bills?
On a telecom, it could be anywhere from 150 to somebody that had a small, like, very focused business at home, could be $400 a year extra.
And you said it was in a handout, not the handout we received today?
No, it's in.
An old handout?
It's, it's different handouts that we've put out.
Okay, maybe I could get some of that.
I emailed all trustees the East Dundee numbers that Tracy has sent to me.
Yeah, I think I've seen that one. Okay, thank you.
All right. One last comment, Janet.
These are not difficult numbers. If your phone bill is $50 a month and if the tax on it is 5%, then I think you can figure out how much that is, right? I mean, you know, you know, these are, these are pretty simple numbers when it comes to something like telecom tax. I don't think that the East Dundee numbers are necessarily translatable to Campton Hills. I don't think that there's any reason to think that a higher income correlates with a higher subscription level of streaming services. In fact, I suspect the opposite is true. And the, for me, the real issue here is that we have a huge, huge hole in road funding. And, and the effort here seems to be to try and come up with a series of, of, of Band-Aids or call them, you know, larger than Band-Aids if you want, but still, to get to the $500,000, $600,000, $700,000 that you need to actually pay for a proper road program. And I don't understand how you get there, $100,000 at a time. And I don't believe that most of these are going to generate $200,000 plus. I think that's a pipe dream. Having worked on the telecom numbers and the streaming tax numbers, I, you know, I'm not sure that that's there. I would like to hear more about the, the utility tax numbers. What it seems to me is squarely right down the middle of what the village is allowed to do without any question is telecom tax and utility taxes. The streaming tax thing is like out there and I don't think any municipality should be doing it, let alone Campton Hills. And I don't think that anybody on this board is particularly for the food and beverage tax. So I would like to hear about the, more about the utility tax, because maybe that and a telecom tax gets us some reasonable portion of the way to cover the shortfall that we're discussing. I would also like to mention, when it comes to the supposed structural budget shortfall, that upon further research as to how staff budgeting is done, that most municipalities plan for a certain staff budget, but they budget for less than that because they know they will not actually fill those staff positions. So, well, the police should plan for all the positions that they think they, that they need, right? You know, we fully support that. But are, are we this year, next year, or any other year going to get to 100% staffing? Probably not. So I'm not sure that the supposed structural deficit is there. And to the extent that we're trying to solve the road problem, you need bigger numbers.
Okay, Nick and then Frank, and then we'll just move on.
Something I forgot to mention last time around is in order for this to work for me, I would need to see some bond issuance quotes. You know, what could these, what could these taxes actually fund in a bond? Because I see the way this working as if we were to do this, that boom, we're able to go out and we're able to knock out all the red on the robotics map and get that done within a couple of years and just have it knocked out. But I'm curious, you know, based on the revenue these would generate, what kind of bond we could afford? Oh, is that the last page of the packet? Oh, I definitely went through everything. I don't know how I missed it. Last page, okay.
Okay, Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, my only comment to trustee Mallett's comment earlier about it really being a replacement. And I think, you know, from a streaming perspective, the average, I'm going to show my age a little bit here. But when you used to go to Blockbuster or you used to order from Netflix where they mailed it to your house or when you downloaded something, you pay the sales tax. And there's a lot of municipalities that have sales tax on, on these types of things. So I just think we need to keep an open mind. But, you know, again, my point is the roads. And if we can earmark this for the roads, I'd be willing to consider each and every option. But again, you know, I'm just going to reiterate, we want to get the general public educated so we can get some support on this. And I, I would love to see more of a comprehensive plan on how we're going to accomplish this. Instead of just saying we're going to do user fees or taxes or, or whatever, you know, how are we going to combine that with bonds and all the other things that trustee Mallett mentioned earlier? How are we going to create the entire structure so over the next 20 years, we can meet the funding goals that we need? So to me, this is one piece of a bigger plan. To trustee Burson's comment, and I'd like to see something bigger. And it doesn't have to be by next meeting, but I'd like to see a, a bigger plan at some point.
And the reason we're talking about this is that we know we have a $25 million hole to get out of on the roads. So a $10 million bond pledging revenues would be the first step, knocking off the major red portion of the robotics report, would give the confidence in four years roughly time or five years' time to put a bond referendum to be on the property tax, either in combination with the highway district or just the village alone. But that'd, that'd be a political pain sharing with the highway commissioner to put it either, or in a combination of both entities, saying, you know, 102 miles of the 135 or the village. So the commissioner's going to say, you guys should go first. And I, if you did a 15 million, I should only be 2 million of that, of that debt load on the property taxpayer. You know, that's something that's far out. If we don't show and demonstrate that we can handle the red with doing this, like a $10 million bank qualified bond in the market at 4%, you can see, we, we could make it work with the MFT and two out of the four revenue streams of user fee slash taxes. And you could then have the confidence to do what you're saying is going before the public to do what the open space township just did in pass. But I don't think, in the condition of your roads, I've been doing this for 30 years. I don't think you can get a 51% of the community to vote themselves a property tax increase to fix roads when they see the knowledge that there's such a hole and they haven't been taken care of since the village has been inception of. Although, I think, I said this last year, you're in better shape by being incorporated than staying in the township because the township gets money on a mile basis. We get it on the per capita basis. So over the period of time, it's been 50 to 7500,000 more by being incorporated than if it was just still the township highway district on the 130-some miles of road. So the reality is though, you got to start somewhere. And nobody is ever at this board, since the inception, taken the step to address the lack of revenue to fix the capital need of the roads. It's been, I know that the Public Works Committee has been the only committee that's been striving to do it. And you had John and Timothy from the Finance Committee acknowledge the fact that they haven't pushed the lack of a capital funding for the village's budget year after year. It's, it's just a fact. How you deal with that fact is a political reality that the seven of you have to decide. You know, I can bring Mark Court to go over the robotics and the cost of roads and do an update of that hot sheet of miles, miles of road and how far behind we are and what that estimate would be. But it's, you got an immediate 15 million almost need right now. And then you're only going to address 4 million of that with the KDOT bypass list, which Scott told me this week that MFT and Schaumburg, IDOT, it's not going to happen in about 98% surety, those roads won't be built this September because there's been some issues with Schaumburg and processing bids and putting them out on the street. So that bypass list of the four main roads with the federal-state revenue share, we probably won't be constructing those until next spring. And that, he's going to come to the next meeting and discuss if you want to do what we thought we were going to do next year with some MFT dollars and reserve funds to do three to five miles or two miles and a half of roads that are the worst. We might move la- next year to this year and then have next year be the major roads. But I can bring Scott so you can have a better feel and the public has a better feel of how bad the capital deficit is. And it's just, as Timothy and John said from the Finance Committee, it has not been budgeted for in, since the inception of the village. And Timothy and I, mainly I, have tried to say to you, you've, you got to, you got to face the reality. It's, it's too bad that the seven of you today and last year's seven get handed the butcher's bill. But it's coming due.
Mike, last, that's it, last comment.
The, the challenge, I think, for the audience and anybody watching this, that, that the challenge is, as trustee Benetti repeated me having said, we're not in this boat alone. And we're competing against towns that have property taxes that, that were already built in. So we have to be a little bit more creative than those that have property tax revenues. And that's keeping true to our form. The, the ability for us to, to partner, I'll use that term, with the state comes with strings. And a lot of them are slightly nerve-wracking timeframes, very nerve-wracking timeframes. Design rules that we would not normally apply to ourselves. And we've had the discussion of when it's appropriate, what level of structural replacement we're doing on these based on getting federal, this is federal money passed through, through the state, as opposed to if we would just do it ourselves. And on the bigger roads, I think we've come to consensus, those are the ones that make the most sense. So, but that still leaves us with our own roads. The, the, either the chip seals that were chip sealed a couple, three, four times, that then had asphalt or something that even started as asphalt, but they were allowed to do what I generally refer to as a driveway, which is you have three inches asphalt on 10 inches of stone, which is a driveway. It shouldn't be a road. So that's the reality. And to the administrator's point, the, the butcher's bill is a good way to, to phrase it because the, the, the use of it has been by everybody. But the challenge we will get, if we look at it as a village-wide with a, with a weak plan, is I've got mine, I don't care, I'm not going to vote yes. And there are several roads that we have done that would, that could have that attitude, I've got mine, they'll say no. The other tools we talked about, I think, could still be on the table because SSA is a self-bonding thing. So that is, that's a mechanism where you talk to a, a designated property group. It doesn't have to be a HOA, it doesn't have to be on the same road necessarily. It should be, they just have to be contiguous, contiguous. And you can say, we're going to establish SSA unless we have objectors equalling 51% of the electors and the property owners, taxpayers. So we could look at that as an option too. But when we realize what we're chasing is ultimately protecting the EAV of everybody, because the, the, the great safety is one thing. And if it keeps great town crappy roads, you know, we don't have, some of us don't have curbs, but we use the term curb appeal still. And driving to get to your house when you come time to sell your house can be an issue if it's the whole way to get to your house. So I believe folks realize that. But then that reinforces what I said earlier about, my road's fine, I don't have to pay. So when we look at this going forward, could we, could we not? I don't want to go all in and just say, we're going to do a bond. I don't want to go all in and say, we're just going to use the 800,000 straight on road maintenance as opposed to using it for leverage on bonding because I think there's some in-between that we need to, to balance that we need to come up with and, and decide. I've, I've said a few times over and to, to the point about when we go and talk to our neighbors, there's some folks on cul-de-sacs that are, they don't, they don't care. Right, you, you talk to them, yeah, my cul-de-sac's kind of crappy, but it's fine. And if that's the case, then that's fine. But then there's other people that are like, this is horrible, this is terrible, blah, blah, blah. And that's, that's a good group to approach. If you've got five, 10, seven people on a cul-de-sac and we talk to them individually and say, you know what? We'll never get to your cul-de-sac because we have to focus on the four-lane roads. We have to focus on the heavily traveled two-lane roads. We have to do yada, yada. But here's an opportunity. And it goes back to the success we've had, as I said, with our, our three SSAs that we've had. Those, those were not controversial. We talked with the folks, we had a good rapport with them. We went through everything that was, was good and bad and different about it. And we had two objectors on the one because they had big parcels and they got a higher levy and they didn't think it was, you know, protecting them as much or they weren't getting as much value out of it. I get that. But out of 47, if I think Nancy Lane is right, had 47 properties, then that's the mechanism, that's the best we can do for the mechanism. So if we can keep those in the potential toolkit, please?
All right. We're going to move on.
Which, which ones do we have a consensus you want more information on?
I think all of them.
Well, I think food and beverage. There was two strong, no food and beverage, and then a three. You would not? So that's three. So there's four, so I won't give you more information on food and beverage. The utility tax, the telecom is consensus, there's a divided house. You're strongly against streaming. Is there a consensus to consider the streaming? So I get more factual numbers on that.
I would support it.
Yes?
Or at least researching it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about all three.
Yeah. Okay.
I would look into it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the next meeting, we'll dig a little deeper on those three. And to your point, Nick, we'll do more of these analysis for you to, to make that clear.
If I'm reading that right, that's not really applicable. To us, now that I finally noticed it was there and what it was. That, we're not going to have 1.5 million. I mean, that's our, our payment, 1.5. I mean, could we make that more applicable to what we would actually be generating? Am I reading that right?
No, I think the, the payment would be 456 if it was the principal of 12 million borrowed on a bond at 4%. And the interest, you know, you pay more in interest and then the, the principal. But you do, you know, we'll, we'll get, spell that out on these three, how much money it would be with your MFT. on these three, how much money it would be with your MFT to what you could comfortably do. And I'll make it very clear, you wouldn't be doing a bond this year because you'd have to establish the user fee slash taxes, wait a full year to true up the numbers come in as projected before you would go out to combine MFT with whatever one or three user fees you did. So it'd be a year from now, you'd be talking about doing a bond, not this year because you wanna true up these estimates that Mark Rooney was clairvoyant and IDO's numbers match to reality a year later. And we established that. And then you would do something with the revenue bond.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, potential annexation agreements.
I would, we'll do this together. Next meeting, just in full discussion mode, it'll be on for discussion to potentially discuss a pre-annexation agreement with Shodine as the builder and developer of the 962 acres that was once the Charles development of the Ryan property south of 38. So that will come to you in two forms. There'd be an annexation tract that he'd have to annex into the village. And then there's the planned unit development tract that would be sent to the Planning and Zoning Board to review and clarify some issues on the developer's plan. And then that would come back to the village. But you'd have a discussion with Mr. Shodine next meeting on the pre-annexation because he wants some assurances if he does A, B, and C that he's got a good chance of how it would go with the planning and zoning, come back to you for passage if it meets your criteria. You'd start out with, it doesn't box you in, though. I mean, we're together are gonna give you some pieces of the plan that we would make him guarantee, and then he'd get some assurances. But they are a guideline because you can still change your mind as seven people. And he knows that as a developer and a builder. So we would outline that, you would take two actions. You'd start us with the annexation aspect and the planned unit development piece would go to the Planning and Zoning Board for review. He will have like a bubble diagram where the open space is gonna be and where the pods of housing and the type of housing and a general feel for that. So think Milk Creek, not Norton Lake, or certainly not Elburn Station Development. But of 962 acres, 462 plus or minus will be open space. So 900 is his count that he's driving toward. So that's less than one house per acre. But when you subtract out, you know, 462 acres gonna be open space or the floodplain of the creeks being protected, then you're gonna have 900 units on 500 acres. So that's, under the comp plan, that's allowed because as a conservation neighborhood idea, you credit the open space into the density equation. So that, but that's still, the seven of you as four have to decide if that's adequate as it comes back to you and how the roads are laid out. We have got it set so there'd be no connection to Brundage because that's a scenic byway, a gravel road, rustic road. And it's gravel for the most part. And there's creeks that we wanna protect and the open space on the east as well as the north of those creeks. So we would not have any bridges because we don't have road and bridge money 20 years, 30 years later to repair said bridge. If anything, there'd be a connecting pedestrian-type path over the creek so the people in that area could reach all that 460 open space acreage. So we'd account for that, but we don't wanna create a road and bridge problem. And we don't want a connection to Brundage. And we're limiting only one connection to Harley so that we can, again, limit the neighbors on Harley having traffic flow their way. So trying to take those limitations in, and he is agreeing as a developer to follow those. But you still have to put your fingerprints on what I think I've discussed with the previous seven when I was first brought in that you wanted to do something about, your future planning area, to have as minimum development as possible. Because we know at some point, if you read Drew Fraz's history, they've been trying to develop that parcel for 25 years. And they've been 2,000 to 3,000 units. That would be very detrimental to the quality of life of the existing Campton Hills because a flow of that traffic would change your quality of life. 900 units is gonna impact you, but not the way 2,000, 500, or 3,000 units would have. So it's not staying farm, but there is this ability to get commitments for the open space and the various forest preserves, St. Charles Park District, Campton Township, open space. And the Conservation Fund nationally would hold a lot of the land till those other entities could produce the revenue stream to purchase parts of that acreage. And even the foundation that's out of Naperville that kinda serves the western suburbs has money. And so they'd all come into play on that open space. So it looks like a very positive development, but you still would review what Mr. Shodine says and then make the recommendation to send it to Planning and Zoning and tell us to start working on an annexation agreement. The two, annexation and the PUD, would have to come together to be passed at the same future date. And one would, the annexation, because Carmen's such a fantastic lawyer, could be done in a week and the planning part could take three months. But, you know, I jest, but the annexation would be faster than the PUD problem. So that's what's gonna be up for discussion. You discuss it, review it, and then an action item on June 3rd. If your discussion goes well, next meeting. So that's, and Carmen, legally, you have to say what you have to say.
Sure. So the village doesn't have a formal courtesy review process in the village code like some communities do? Where a developer comes forward and says, I'd like to propose this development, whatever it might be, however large it might be, I'd like to get your input before I move forward and actually file for a zoning entitlement. But this is an opportunity for Shodine and their president to come and do that. You can certainly allow that and I would recommend it here. So it's a chance for you and the community to see what is at least generally being proposed. Based on that feedback, then Shodine could either amend their plan or their general plan, come back to you again if they'd like. Or based on what you've told them, they could internally agree and then agree to then submit for zoning entitlement, which would be a PUD, which would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Obviously, the Planning and Zoning Commission would review it however many times they need to take a look at it and then send back a recommendation to the village board for further review and approval. The expectation that we have is that it would be a preliminary PUD. There are a number of units there, likely take quite some time to be fully built out. So there are some things that could change after preliminary approval until after they come back for final approval, after they meet with various agencies, KDOT, state, for all the other approvals they would need and insight they would need for the plan. So it would likely be a preliminary PUD, would not likely be a combined preliminary final. As administrator Rooney said, we've been speaking with representative Shodine about a pre-annexation agreement, not an annexation agreement. If we had an annexation agreement and then it came to you for action, they'd be part of the village. They don't wanna agree to that until they know that there's at least some general green light as to their zoning entitlement. And the development plan. So the pre-annexation agreement would be contingent on approval of zoning, which is not uncommon. I mean, it would, will be a fairly significant document with asks from both sides, demands from the village, requests from the developer. But none of it is set in stone. If the village board decides not to approve the PUD, it probably doesn't come into the village under that pre-annexation agreement. You actually have an annexation ordinance and probably an annexation agreement as well to cover any terms that the PUD didn't cover. That would formally be approved by the village board. So you have multiple chances to review the project. This is really just the first step. So feel free to ask as many questions as you can of the developer. He should have some, you know, some schematics for you and be able to answer anything that you have or can get you that information once it comes back.
Mark, can I, I see some puzzled looks as far as where the property is located. It's the Ryan property that's south of 38 and between Brundage and LaVox Road. And, well, and Harley would be one of the annexations as well and the LaVox train station. So just clarify that.
Yeah, LaVox is south of Route 38 from.
I'm sorry, south, Route 38 south. It's in the future planning area, the mile and a half. And it's to Kestlinger, but it's bracketed by Brundage on the east and Harley on the west. So it's the former Ryan 962 acres. There's probably 1,500 or 1,600 acres there. Not all of it is owned by Ryan. It's the 962, to be specific, that Ryan had proposed at St. Charles for the Pulte development. It's that same land that was discussed in St. Charles five months ago, seven, six months ago. So it's that land specifically. And you'll see that in the diagrams very clearly on the maps. And we've talked in one-on-one, I've described this to each of you and you'll just get the formal presentation. And the annexation ideas, if you've got concerns or issues, contact Carmen or I and we'll tell you whether we've already made those considerations or we'll add it to our list to give the village some protection. So we're working on that as well. And I think on the warrants, I think we already approved a Kleintorpe and Jenkins bill that will be paid for out of the developer's initial 15,000 he put forward on a request to be escrow for consideration of this plan.
Right. I think there may have been some discussion about that during budget time, but the village code has a provision that requires an escrow for zoning entitlement applications. And the developer has agreed to deposit significantly higher than what's allowed in the code. Part of the pre-annexation agreement is going to increase that amount significantly. Legal costs, engineering costs, consulting costs, planning costs, all would be paid by the developer. Even if the development does not go through at all, those fees would be reimbursed. The village would be paying those fees, but they would be reimbursed. As Mark said, the invoice tonight from us would be paid by them.
All right, we'll move on. Village comprehensive plan update?
I would like everyone to be aware that they are finished with their work and the rework of the comp plan will be on the 22nd of this month at 5:00 for a public hearing. They will not start the public hearing right at 5:00. They're gonna have like a display of the maps and different parts of the comp plan and answer, staff will answer informal questions before the formal public hearing would begin and take testimony and feedback. But the draft of that, I will send that out on Wednesday to all of you because we made some edits last Wednesday to the document that they considered last Wednesday night. And you'll have that. And I would highly encourage the seven of you to come and get the totality of what the work was and what the product is so then when it comes to the village board, it's easier in the Jim Brown, mainly Jim Brown, not Rooney, presentation of the comp plan for your consideration to adopt or modify. But it's a very good document. It's vastly improved over the CMAP donated, you know, free writing of 2012. It was, yeah, it was a grant, it was a grant. And CMAP had a bunch of grad students working with one professor and they wrote a generic kinda comp plan. It's much better than the 2007. You had to have one and they checked the box. This is an improvement vastly and it talks about future planning areas because that is the threat to your quality of life is what's developed on your periphery. So that's the comp plan.
Okay. All right, moving on, Dee. Village bond for road improvements. I think we kinda covered that already, yeah? All right, our next village meeting will be Tuesday, May 20th at 7:00 PM. And no need for closed session, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, move by trustee Burson.
I'll second.
By, second by trustee Huffensberger. All right, all in favor say.